Okay, let's call the meeting to order. Minutes and reports received and filed?
We have October 2015 Sheriff's case filed. And then we have the cost allocation plan for Co County. The 2014 actual cost plan report. And then we have the October 2015 Treasurer's reconciliation report.
Okay. Commissioner liaison reports, upcoming meetings and events?
I don't know. I think that doesn't matter. We've got veterans back.
Veterans day.
All kinds of things that day. I think that's about it. Still good to hear.
I've got CAP region executive board meeting tomorrow. We're doing Operation Eagle Boy, book sale at the store. Thursday, I'm turning the old Pennies building at 2:00 P.M. Chiefs meeting. Fridays, the Renegades at 7:00. We're doing warrant. You want me to do warrants?
Yeah, somebody else needs to do it.
Okay.
All stuff.
I will do warrants.
Okay.
Saturdays, Naval Sea Cadets dinner, awards dinner. Sunday through Tuesday, where at Matt?
Only thing else I have is supposed to do an interview on KMIZ on Thursday morning, so...
Okay. Any unfinished business? New business accounts payable with you?
There's some utility bills out there, so I'd ask for approval of accounts payable.
There was more than utilities, weren't there, Demi?
We're just gonna do the ones that are dated today. And there should be just utility ones.
Dated today?
Yeah.
Okay. So I moved.
Sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Delivery of auditor's budget for 2016?
Good morning, guys. We're here to present the Budget Auditor's Recommended Budget for 2016. I'm just gonna quickly go through, say, there's a large book here that you guys can look through and ask questions later if you'd like. So we're just gonna briefly go through some of those tables if you'd like to follow along. Some of the highlights for the 2016 budget is total financial resources available for expenditures is slightly over 65.4 million. Total planned basic operating expenditures of about 44.9 million. There's 8.7 million in infrastructure projects. That includes roads and any capital expenditures. Almost 16.6 million in public safety, which includes law enforcement activities. We have included a salary adjustment in the budget. It's a 2 percent COLA for all employees. And then there is a 2 percent merit pool that will be divided by the departments. The county is also continuing to coverage the health and dental insurance. Reserves in all funds are at or above the target level of 9 to 15 percent of basic revenue. So if you look at page, Roman numeral five is Table 1. Table 1, it reports the total financial resources of all sources in total of all funds combined, and it compares the '15 and '16 budgets. So it gives you comparison of last year and this year. Almost two-thirds of the county's revenue will come from some type of tax. The second largest source of revenue is from fees charged for more than 50 different services that the county provides. You will see a slight increase in fees mainly due to an increase in our fees for housing federal prisoners in the jail. Our actual total operating expenditures are projected to be down about a total of 1 percent, but there is fluctuations in all of the different uses there. Of course, the salary increase increased the personnel services. We did have a decrease in some of the grants because we had multi-year grants that discontinued in '15. Personnel, supplies, and capital outlay are projected to require about 83 percent of the total operating expenses. Again, reserves in all funds, including major funds, are at or above the prudent levels. The county has six major funds, two enterprise funds, one internal service fund, and 12 minor funds, which excludes the school fund and the tax over plus. And if you look at Table 2, it divides those out so you can see those major funds individually. And then it groups together all of the other funds into a line themselves. The total revenue generated by activity in 2016 is slightly over 47.9 million. And most of that is restricted in use because they are special revenue funds. The general fund is always classified as a major fund. It's the largest fund in terms of total financing resources and second largest in basic operating revenue. The total about 8.9 million in operating revenue, and it accounts for about one-fourth of the revenue of the county. The road and bridge fund is the smallest of the major funds and the smallest of the special revenue funds, but if you combine it with the sales tax fund, because road and bridge personnel control most of it also for roads and bridges, their total is about 15.2 million when you look at both of those funds together. The law enforcement fund is the second largest of the major funds and the largest of the special revenue funds. Its basic revenue is about 8.5 million and mostly comes from a special sales tax that can only be used for law enforcement purposes and operations and capital improvements in the jail. And then the last major fund on this table is the Emergency Medical Services Fund, which is the third largest major fund and the second largest special revenue fund. The county does have another major fund. It is the Neighborhood Improvement District Fund, but it does not have a lot of budgetary effects, so it's not listed separately in this table. If you turn to page nine and 10, Roman numeral nine and 10, you see Tables 3 and 4. These are both the same information, just reported two different ways. The first one is comparative expenditures by resource, so it listed personnel services, contractual services, supplies and materials separately. Table 4 lists them a different way. It breaks it down by resource, so it groups together our general government, health and welfare, public safety. It provides more probably information to the public on the types of functions that the county provides. The total recommended expenditure budget is about the same in 2015 as the amended budget, only about $427,000 difference between those two. The next three tables, which is on 12, 13, and 14, does the three largest major funds individually. So you can see it broken down over actual activity in '14, amended budget '15, department and budget requested for '16. It gives you a better idea is to show you any increases or unusual or regular activities in those funds. They're a little more clear when you look at them individually. I will point out a couple of changes. General fund, if you look at the supplies and materials expense, you can see quite a large increase in there. You have to realize that next year is a presidential election here, and the county does cover quite a bit of that cost. So there's a big change that you can see in that table. If you look at the law enforcement fund, we did add back the 911 costs into that budget, so you can see in contractual services, the jump from the '14-'15 amount to what we're showing for the 2016. We also did add four new employees in the law enforcement fund, which you can see in that table. The Emergency Medical Services Fund, there are no large changes to that fund. It is fairly stable in both revenue and expenditure. The fees and taxes in there are pretty set. They don't bring any additional revenue into that fund. And we have come down to the capital outlay and personnel services in there is pretty fixed, so there's not a lot of changes in the Emergency Medical Fund. If you turn to Page 15, the final table, shows us projected ending reserves in those major funds and a total for all funds. We are at or above that 10 percent level in every fund except for the sales tax fund, which is 9 percent. You will see some operating deficits that are included in the budget. Most of those are normal deficits, so in road and bridge and sales tax, a lot of that's due to timing. So when we start a project, we have to budget the whole amount of the project, but the project will last multiple years. So that's the reason you see that deficit. We build up those reserves to cover that whole project, and then we spend it down. General fund, over the last couple of years, we have budgeted a deficit in that fund. We have never come out a deficit. Most of that's due to attrition in a lot of our personnel lines and the way that we budget. We budget for every position to be full all year long and no changes to that. So anytime someone leaves in the middle of the year or any changes to personnel, it has quite a big effect on that. So we have budgeted a deficit the last few years. We have not come in a deficit, so nothing to be concerned about there. In the other funds, that large amount there is due to all those special revenue funds. A lot of those smaller funds don't spend everything, so they build up those reserves, but we have to budget the whole amount. So that's the reason for the deficit there. The 2016 recommended budget is a financial plan for the county as a whole. The revenues and expenditures for all 21 different funds are balanced, with most of them having an appropriation for contingency. The total county budget is projected to be about 65.4 million. Everything looks very stable with the county. We did not increase the sales tax projection. We did do it for what we projected 2015 to be. It's been a very smooth year for the budget, which is surprising. We'd like to thank everyone for their cooperation. Every department, elected official, everyone's been very cooperative, especially with the new financial software and getting our feet wet with the first time of using it. We'd like to thank everyone for all the help they've given us, especially you guys. You've helped along the way. So do you guys have any questions?
No.
There's lots of information behind here that you guys can go through. Each department has their own sheet in the back that gives their budgets individually. There is some statistical information in between the budget message and those individual budgets. So lots of good information, lots of good reading for later.
Okay.
Easy enough?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kristy.
And department heads, don't forget your meeting is December 14th as far as the next week's budgets.
Okay. Signing of the LiveScan Maintenance Agreement?
I'll let Victor talk on this one.
Okay, this is about five months behind primarily because this is an annual contract that we do. Historically, it's been in the neighborhood of about $8,000. However, we did get a grant this last year for a new LiveScan device. And we also got a free upgrade on our other LiveScan from the state because of the one we had was the oldest one in the state of Missouri. So they actually, it finally blew its motherboard, and they actually gave us a totally new, basically, a new LiveScan. So we got that free charter. So we had been planning on buying LiveScan devices and trying to prepare a budget for that in the neighborhood of about $12,000 to $16,000. So the grant and then the replacement of the LiveScan saved us quite a bit of money. So this maintenance contract reduces the contract from maintenance on the two LiveScans that we had to one, which is why it's down to, what is it, $3,694 versus the $8,000? It's behind because Morpho Trust, the company who provides the maintenance contract, which is basically mandated by the state because it's a statewide system through the Highway Patrol, couldn't get the equipment information correct in the contract. So it took us quite a while to convince them what equipment we actually had. So we finally got that corrected, and that's why it's being presented to you now. Normally, it would be April. So next April, we'll be coming back to upgrade this maintenance contract and to add the new LiveScan device that we have when it comes off of warranty, which is around the same time.
What is a LiveScan machine?
A LiveScan device is a computerized fingerprint collector. It's what we use to collect fingerprints nowadays instead of ink from people that are arrested and then court ordered fingerprints, CCW fingerprints, employment application fingerprints for county employees, things like that.
Okay. Any questions, Jeff?
No.
I move that we sign the agreement with Morpho Track for the LiveScan maintenance.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Door's working okay at the jail?
Yes.
Okay. Approval and signing of Republic Services Contract for the Health Department?
This is the agreement. And Jill has looked it over. Greg, if you have any questions, just stay here.
Trash contract.
So is that just at the Health Department, or?
Yeah.
How do our other contracts run?
I'm not sure why we're getting one for this. I found utilities when we didn't have one, but I think this is more for the pickup of the paper stuff. Like a trash pickup thing out there for...
We have one for one back here?
For recycle.
Recycle.
Recycle. The Health Department's the only one that has that.
It's for your awesome recycle.
Guys, I didn't know about it, but we have a trash dumpster that's specifically for trash and one that's specifically for recycle. We have a lot of boxes and things. Where we started that one, she was here.
So we don't have a contract for this one back here, though?
I haven't seen it.
So I'm just curious why we got one for that? Larry, y'all got one out there? Y'all got dumpster out there for the forks?
We have.
Y'all got one out of DMS? Do we have contracts for all of them?
This is the first time I've seen it.
I'm just trying to be difficult.
I'm just saying maybe because of the one that we have for recycle.
I mean, I don't care if we're signing it saying that we're agreeing to use it for a year. I don't have one.
I'm trying to think if I signed one for the store. I get a bill every month, I pay. I don't know if I ever signed a contract.
Is there something new there, Jeff?
No.
I don't know, gave it to Mel and... I would like to make a contract out there.
Man, I don't care if we're gonna keep it, right? You need it out there, right? Kristy?
Yes.
I guess at one time I signed a con... Could I have like three times a week?
We broke you that, though. You don't sign contracts without our permission.
This is at the store.
Oh.
So I would assume I signed a contract at one time. I'm a...
What? Oh, contract for Republic.
Yeah.
They were just asking about if we don't really sign anything for them.
Doesn't mean you shouldn't now. I dealt with our sales rep, and she just, and I told her it was a three-year deal, and I said, "We can't do that." So she said, "Just to mark that out and put 12 months, it will automatically renew unless you want to cancel it," which I can't imagine you would. And then there's a statement for Kristen to sign.
All right. So is that a monthly fee? Is that all it is?
We pay monthly. Two different bills come, one for the regular trash, and then another one for the recycle.
We're finding a lot of contracts that should have been done properly that haven't, and they were signed by department heads, or she never went through the commission. And Dale Ratchett signed a lot of...
Says the contact is Greg Camp. So Greg?
I'm sorry.
Yeah. Greg knows that.
What is your pleasure, gentlemen?
I was just trying to figure out what it's for. Is it just for recycling? Is it for all trash? I mean, I can't make big details out of this thing. I see the terms. I see something says monthly, and then it has a container delivery of $95, basic service of $131, and non-scheduled service of $71.50.
Those are different. I just went through all this before my conduct. What, okay, the delivery, you've already got the dumpster, right? So that, well, excuse me? Okay, so that wouldn't apply. You want a different dumpster, that's $80. You want to move the dumpster, it's $95. Take it away, $95. And that's if you've got extra.
So basically, we're paying $131.08 a month is what it comes down to?
Yes.
Is that for both single string and recycling? This is just for recycling?
So, yeah, listen. Greg, do you know the contents of this dumpster?
Well, she's got two dumpsters. She's got one for trash and one for recycle. I'm assuming one of the table, this is the recycle dumpster. I could have them back because I haven't seen a trash one before.
That has...
How much do we recycle?
We have quite a few boxes, but that doesn't make a lot of money for...
How much, how big is the dumpster?
It's the same size dumpster.
So like a two-yard or?
That's a two-yard length.
And do they come once a month, or?
No, they're like once a week.
For the recyclables?
I think for both.
I'm not sure.
So it's like $33 a week?
Could put it in recycling everywhere else and be prepared a week.
I mean, we take all our recycling over to this dumpster, to that?
When I worked at the state, we had mandatory recycling on all kinds of stuff. In fact, it's written in the state law.
About $93, plus another $147 every month.
For $93 for what? Don't know. Is that both bills? Is that both bills?
Yes, two separate bills.
So one's for recycling and one's for trash?
Yes.
So it sounds to me like we're paying more for recycling than we are for trash. I mean...
That's pretty much the way it is for everything. If you want to recycle something, it's going to cost you a lot more to recycle it. You could have just burnt it.
Or you could have put it in the trash and made it less.
Well, now you can do that with tires. All you gotta do is cut the tires up and you can throw them in there.
Yeah.
Yep.
I mean, I'm all for recycling, but when it costs you more than it does to throw it in the trash, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense, especially when there's recycling places that take it for free.
But then it's going to cost us to haul it there.
Well, I get that.
Keep it at fast mileage.
One just need to be signed.
We can put it off till next week.
Let's put it off.
Okay, yeah.
So it gets even better. So basic service, $93.02. Two-yard dumpster, right? Scheduled service is S3, which I assume is weekly. So this is a four-yard dumpster. Scheduled service is S1. So the basic amount is $131.08, plus a total fuel recovery fee of $13.48.
Trash?
On, all right. Everybody charges a fee for everything, so anyway. I'd like to look into this a little bit more before we sign this, so, I mean, I'm with Jeff. I'm throwing this truck and letting it burn it.
Okay. We're gonna table it?
Blow it out or burn it. I could have dirt in it.
I have a city hall.
Burn season now. Burn season now, we put burn bit on it. County. I won't worry about that. That will find you close there. I tell Commissioner Solzage County that all the time, so we just take them tires we collect with them. They appreciate that, just like they appreciate the new Walmart. They hate it.
Okay, we're gonna table that, right?
Yep.
Okay. You ready for Co County appointments to Campo Technical Committee?
It's easy for you to say.
Let's go.
Okay. I'm gonna recommend that we appoint Dave Elliott, Mayor of Wardsville, Village of Wardsville, to the technical committee. We'll have, the technical committee will have the Village of Wardsville on it, and the City of St. Martins will have an appointee on the board. I forgot last week, we had a technical committee that we had to appoint somebody to. So if you want to have any discussion, or I'll make a motion, we appoint Dave Elliott, Mayor of Wardsville, to the Campo Technical Committee.
So you're gonna appoint somebody else to, from St. Martins, on to something else?
We did that last week.
Oh, we did that last week?
Yeah, we did that board, the board directors, last week. And then they sent me an IC email, "Oh, we need this too."
Okay, I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Do we have any other issues to come before?
I've got all kinds of issues.
Any important issues?
I think that you had say on the record.
I knew I shouldn't have left it open. Okay. Who all wants, do you want the fiscal notes emailed to you from the state of Missouri? Because I got a courtesy call yesterday from Cheryl saying the only one signed up for it is me. Would I like to be the person that gets them and distributes them? And I said, "No, no." So I said, "I would talk to you," and I said that Jill should be on there as a contact person. And she said, "Well, we click on the county, the only person on it is me." So you may need to email her again and make sure.
Okay. They said you want them. And I think some of you also got this, Larry, and...
Did you email that?
Said who should be the contact person? I told them that I would be the contact person for the county as a whole or the county commission, and the individual elected officials like Larry or the sheriff or whoever would be, would receive them for ones that affect their offices. So they obviously didn't get the message.
Did you all email them? Do you want them, Steve?
I didn't email them back, but I get them already.
Okay. I'm just passing it on. She was, like I said, it was a courtesy call. And I said, "Don't send it to me, I'm not the contact person. I just want each one of them so I can look at it myself." And a lot of it's in Greek to me, but...
Who's this person, Jeff?
Cheryl, something or another.
Yeah, I'd rather not get them. If Jill's looking them over, then she can let us know if there's something of importance, so...
A lot of it is...
Yeah.
Because they count lots of them at a time, if you give them two or 20 at a time, it'll be just a sentence difference.
Well, a lot of that, the state auditor's office fiscal notes are different from legislative oversight. What you get consists of SAO fiscal note, that's the state auditor's office. Those are initiative petitions. What we get from fiscal oversight, our over capital, is legislative oversight, I'm sorry, fiscal notes. Those are for legislation, which is not the same as an initiative petition.
That's probably why I'm different.
Yeah.
Ta-da. What else, Jeff? You said you had all kinds of issues.
So they all had to do with the county.